We wanted to be fun, very informal for you this evening. So when we do recognize you and come up front, if you want anything to say, anything, any stories you'd like to tell, maybe anything related to students that you've had in the past, funny stories that have happened. Libby Johnson told some of the funniest. I think about it and I still just keep laughing about these little preschool and kindergarten kids that she had in the classroom. But anyway, we want you to enjoy this evening. It's all about you. And again, we're very thankful that you could be here and enjoy this. This high school here, we witnessed the retirement of 23 employees. It was 23 on my list. That's the largest group that I'm aware of, and I've been here 14 years, that we've had during that time. There's 14 professionals and retired nine service personnel, representing 635 years of service. Darling, I think you were supposed to be 45. I'm just kidding. Only 45, right? Forty-six, forty-six. So, yeah. Dedicated, faithful service. You know that you've served our children in local communities in the county. You know, darling, having 46 years of experience, 12 of our retirees have more than 30 years. So it was a large number of folks who had a great number of years working in our school system. You know, that just means that we're losing some of our most experienced, skilled, valued employees. You know, that's the downside. But, you know, on behalf of the board members, just a heartfelt thank you for your service, for all the number of years that you've been with us. You're certainly going to be missed. Well, we talked about the care for each slow-paced lifestyle that comes with retirement. I hope that you're able to enjoy, we hope that you're able to enjoy the retirement, and wish you nothing but the best. My father-in-law, he talks about being retired. He tells me all the time, and he doesn't have a watch, and he never knows what time it is, or even what day it is, you know, most of the time. And he just talks about it every day, he's like a sadler.
My husband says the only thing we worry about now are doctor appointments. My friend wore them.
Before we recognize everyone tonight, I'd like to take just a moment to introduce our board members and the central office staff that's here joining us. Begin with the board. We've got Mr. Larry Wilkerson joining us this evening, our vice president of board, Fred Currie as well, as president of the board, Dick Priestley. Carol Smith could join us this evening, as she sends her best. And Rowdy Baker is on his way. He said he got tied up at work and he'll be here just as soon as he can get in. He'll be here in time to eat, I can guarantee that. He'll be here in time to eat. But I want to thank my secretary, Susie, as well as Tina Black. And we brought Brenda out of retirement to plan the ceremony. They want to plan the party like Brenda does. Thank you all, thank you very much. Brenda's retiring after 42 years of service. Tina is starting year number 43. So time goes by fast, doesn't it? Sean Donahue, thank you, thank you so much.
For being late.
We appreciate you and the support you provide at our school system. You're an awesome man. At this time, I'm going to ask the board members, since we'll have you all come up here. Oh, I did? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My assistant. We're going to present you. Oh, there's Rowdy. I told him you'd be here in time to eat.
He was talking about you, Rowdy. And that day job kills me.
We have a beautiful token appreciation for you tonight. It's a beautiful glass water bottle, a Bellico glass. It's really nice. It's not, it's not a car or a check.
Mr. Baker, if I could interrupt, I wanted to share with you, when we went to pick those up, there were some ladies at the counter, and we said that we were getting those for retirement. And they said, where do you all work? And I said, Lincoln County Board of Education. And they said, you're buying those for the retirees? And I said, John. And they said, we're from down south. Would you call our school system? I said, we don't get anything.
Once again, we want to keep this informal, we want it to be fun. If you've got anything you'd like to say, you're welcome to say whatever it is that's on your mind. And again, if you've got some funny stories, and I'm sure all of you do regarding any students or things that may have happened in your career, we'd love to hear those this evening. So I'm going to step to the side and I'm going to ask you to recognize our service personnel. We have eight service personnel on the list, but I think only one showed up. And so, but that's very important, that's been very important to us for years. Ms. Brenda Powell, as Jeff said, has retired after 42 years. Had a lot of, a lot of different jobs. But her main job, when I was out there with the principal, was to keep everybody off my back. And her main job, since coming here, is she, she has a talent like no other talent when it comes to talking to parents. I've had parents call in here, upset, they'll start cussing and carrying on, and before they get finished, Brenda and that parent are exchanging recipes. That's how good it is. But, you know, she, she's been the one that's helped us together. She's trained a lot of superintendents, a lot of assistant superintendents, but she, she's just, just been wonderful. And, you know, we hate to see her go, we really did. But it comes a time that, you know, we did talk her into extending a little bit, but we couldn't get her to stay any longer. But, and she's been coming in and helping, which has always been her nature to come in and do whatever the school system needs. You know, so she's been coming in, working with Susie, and Susie picking things up, and we're moving right along. But, you know, you can't replace Brenda, I'll be honest. You just can't, you can't, you know, you can't replace her. Forty-two years later, Susie will be there. But Susie does a great job too. But Brenda, if you want to come on up, it's, you mean so much to us. One thing about here, we're family. Oh, wait a minute, that's wrong. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You got it, dear?
I got it. Yes, I have a funny story. I have a lot of funny stories. I've attended four meetings for 42 years, probably more than anyone in the state of West Virginia, I'm sure. And lots of memories when we were under state control, good and bad. But I remember one evening, this family came to the board meeting. They signed in to speak, and they had indicated on the sign-in sheet that they had a bus issue to talk about. And the board wasn't prepared, or, you know, didn't know really what was going on, but it didn't matter, they were going to listen and try to help them. And the father got up, and he was, he rambled on for a little while, and he talked about his little girl, she had missed school, and he didn't like that. And he said, we have her out at the end of the driveway, and she was waiting for the bus, and the bus pulled up, and of course, they called the bus driver's name, and said, they just, just went right by and left her. Now, that's a violation of no child left behind. Now, he was serious as a heart attack. And I was sitting over here trying to take notes, you know, I just put my head down, didn't want to laugh at him, because he, bless his heart, he was sincere. It was a violation of the no child left behind. Because they left her standing by the bus. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time at the school system, and it's like coming home, even to come in here today, see all my friends and family. They've all stood by me from thick to thin, and I love them all. My board especially. Thank you.
First board meeting was last past midnight that night. Do you remember that?
Oh, yeah.
I don't remember where that was at.
I don't know either, Fred.
But we'd already laughed for midnight.
Oh, yeah. Phew. Fred's been on most many meetings as I have, hasn't he?
I can remember the first day Brenda came to work. And I'm not that old either. I can't, I don't think you've been around.
Doesn't seem like it does. Mr. Wilkerson was superintendent when I came to work. He sure was. He was, he had a wonderful secretary named Rosemary Bell, who recently passed away, but she taught me so much in the time that, that we were together. She was a wonderful person.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, gosh, yeah. How should we say that?
Can we just take a moment and identify the other service employees? Marshall Frank Henson. Frank was retired June 30th, 2018, as a bus operator in the Hartsdale. He worked with the school administration, approved students' behavior, he attended trainings as, as were required. He retires after seven years of service. But Frank was also the vice president of the Service Personnel Association. Chris Wilkerson, a lot of you knew Chris. Chris retired May 30, 2018, from custodian at Lincoln County High School. He worked at McCorkle and Hamlin before transferring to Lincoln County High School. He worked 23 years for the school system, and he was flexible and cooperated with all Debbie Mullins. Debbie retired October 31st, 2017, after working 30 and a half years as a cook. She worked at Midway, Aitkenville, and Harts PKA. Debbie was very knowledgeable of her job, and was a great cook, and took great pride in her job. Her quality of work was outstanding. Debbie has signed up to substitute, which we'd like for all you guys to do too. We'd like to have all of you substitute. Dana Evans. Dana retired August, was a bus operator. She retired August the 1st, 2017, after eight years of service. Vicky Jeffrey. West Hamlin, you guys there. Vicky retired June 30th, 2018, after working 32 years in the school system. Vicky started as a substitute cook in 1984. She was hired as a temporary cook at Midway in 1986. She worked a year at Guy Valley, 11 years at Branchland, then transferred to West Hamlin cook position where she stayed till she retired last month. She also worked the summer job, credit to cook. Connie Wheeler. Connie retired June the 30th, 2018, as a cook, after working 11 years in this school system. Connie worked at Midway, Hamlin PKA, and moved to West Hamlin in 2013. Timothy Callister. Timmy retired June 30th, 2018, after working, after 39 years in the school system. Timmy started out working in 1977 as a bus operator. He transferred to Ranger Elementary in 1989 as a custodian. He also passed a painter's test and was on a long summer painting job. He signed up to be a substitute, which we want all of you to do. Edith Clowen. Edith retired June the 30th, 2018, as secretary at West Hamlin Elementary. Edith started as a secretary at West Hamlin in 2006. She worked at West Hamlin for 12 years. Let me make sure it's not over. Thank you, Dwayne. You're welcome. All right, we'll move on to our professional employees, and we'll begin with Dwayne Easton. Dwayne, come on up. Dwayne retired January 5th, 2018, teaching for a little over 20 years. He worked at Guy Valley and Hamlin PKA, started his career out in special education. And transferred to health and PE. Dwayne's coached basketball, football, softball, soccer, volleyball, and probably leaving something else. He's my daughter's softball coach. Mel just thinks the world of Dwayne. I ask about him all the time, so she'll be, I can't wait to tell her that you were here tonight. We're in the locker room, recognizing you. Dwayne did retire in January 2018 due to some health concerns. But anyway, Dwayne, we appreciate your service. Just token appreciation. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say what a pleasure it's been to work with everybody in Lincoln County. I grew to appreciate Lincoln County, and I can say that from experience, because I went to Ohio and taught for two years, I went to Logan, I taught eight years in Logan County. I taught one year in Mingo County. And there's just no organization that I've been a part of that's ran like Lincoln County schools does. And it's truly about the kids, and it's been tough to retire this early. As you don't know, I've had stage four cancer with prostate that got into my bones, and I've struggled with it for about a year now. And it truly gave me a new perspective on how much of a treasure our kids are in through special ed and teaching physical education. And Joan Higgins probably won't appreciate this, but the one story I wanted to tell, it came to mind when we talked about funny stories. I was teaching special ed upstairs at Guy Valley, and I had just came back from Mingo County Schools, and Mr. Midkiff and Joan were nice enough to get me back in at Guy Valley. And I was with an autistic kid upstairs who I loved to death, and I still see him all the time, and he always had me every chance he gets. Anyway, we had to, he was upset one day, and we had to go in, and Mr. Higgins said, step out of the hall, I want to talk to him for a minute by myself, and I thought, that might not be a good idea. But I went ahead and stepped out in the hall, and then a minute or two later, comes Mr. Higgins back at the door, can you come in here and help me? We're going to have to restrain this kid. And so we go to get a hold of the kid, and I'll never forget what he said, and I told Joan, I said, he just pegged us right on the head. He said, let go of me, you two second-grade imbeciles. I love that kid, and I think about that kid all the time, that special kid. And the last thing I want to say is, I hope you find retirement easier to deal with than I have. I have twice drove by Guy Valley with my wife with me, looked over at the school, and couldn't help it, started crying. And that's how special it was to me, and how special all of you guys are in the school system here. And I just hope that we all find a way to deal with having a whole lot of time on our hands. Thank you.
Next, we have Sheila Kitchen. Sheila, if you'll come on up and join us. I can remember the first time I met Sheila. I've just been hired as a math instructional coach, business, West Hamlin Elementary School. And I thought she was kind of... And I don't know if you'll remember this or not, but somehow someone had already told you that I'd been hired, and we didn't really know one another, but you tracked me down there the day I was at school. And you said, you know, she said, Mr. Midkiff, I know this is not your responsibility. She said, but Ollie Honey is a textbook coordinator. And she said, and you said, I really would like another teacher's edition, for I don't even remember what it was at the time. And you were like, just kind of, please, can you, see if you can't get me one? And anyway, it just started a great relationship that I had with you.
I think it was hard to get there almost.
It just seemed like it was just... Sheila was retiring after 34 years in the school system. She worked at Pleasant New Elementary in special education, then transferred to West Hamlin Elementary during 2000, in 1992, '93 school year. And remained there top special education until this month, past month when she retired, also in time.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations on your retirement.
I want to say thank you for all the years of teaching in the county. Because I first taught from this five years as a regular ed teacher, and then my husband got transferred to Kentucky. So I thought, where am I going to teach at? And then we could look at county, open their doors for me, be able to transfer, and I got my special ed degree. And ever since then, I've enjoyed, I have ups and downs here in the county, but I've survived them. And I love all of you that I've worked with, and everybody's given me a great job here at Lincoln County Commission.
Thank you. David retired June 30, 2018, as a teacher at West Hamlin Elementary. Still working on the phone?
Do you say 2721?
2723.
You get a note and ask that.
Debbie started, she started her career in 1979, at Midkiff Elementary School. Transferred to Ranger, and then to West Hamlin where she stayed until her retirement. And for many years, Debbie taught after-school at West Hamlin. And worked the total, I think this is right, worked a total of 38 years, 38 plus years in the school system.
I thought she'd shut up, but she didn't know she could. I just have been lucky enough to start at Midkiff, and I have to tell the story about my first day. Mr. McCann hired me, and he had me get with Debbie Atkins, because we'd gone to high school together, and she took me my first day to Midkiff, because she had taught half the year there. So I walk in, and here's this man that meets me at the door. Now, I come from Calhoun County, went to Holland Elementary. My principal was in a suit. Marshall doesn't prepare you for everything when you get them. So I walk in, and here's this man, meets me at the front door, fair faucet tissue on, jeans, and he's running his hands through his hair like this, come on in. He takes me in this little room, goes through all these, through all these instructions and rules and everything, hands me two rolls of masking tape, and a blue book, a register. So I couldn't believe why the principal had on, I thought he was the janitor. So, but anyway, that was my first day. And then I went on, as you mentioned, your Aunt Mary, down the hall, and Debbie's introducing me to different people. So I go into the Title I room, and Naomi McComas is making a bulletin board, and Mary Terry's in there, and they introduced me, and Mary said, what do you think that is that Naomi's making? And I look, and I said, it kind of looks like a toilet. Mary said, Lord have mercy, she's one of us. It's a magic hat. And it's just the title of the board. And so from that minute on, it was like I had a second moment, and I had a whole family. And everywhere that I've taught, I've been fortunate enough to have that. And a tightness and a bond that you can't break. It's just, it's been wonderful here. And the kids have been wonderful, and I just appreciate being here, so thank you very much.
That's cool. I was still at Midkiff. And if you remember Midkiff, if it rained, you got out. So it was my first year, I mean, I was green. And my mom kept saying to me that first month, when do you get paid? I said, I don't know, Mom. You've worked a long time, honey. When do you get paid? And I said, I don't know. So when I finally got paid and opened it, I made more money at Penny's in the summer than I was paying in paycheck. And she was like, is that it? But I came home early one day, and she said, what are you doing at home? And I said, I don't know, Mom, when it rains, you just get out. So it's been wonderful. Thank you.
Just seems like yesterday you were out again, or teaching.
Yes.
Time just passed. Tammy retired June 30th, 2018, as a third grade teacher at West Hamlin Elementary. Tammy worked at Ranger Elementary and Pleasant New Elementary before transferring to West Hamlin Elementary, where she worked for 24 years. Tammy retires from the school system with 36 years of experience. Congratulations.
I've seen, I've seen you at home, but there's been a few more than you, and I appreciate everything they've done for me, and I appreciate all the people here and all the teachers, and all, especially all the kids I've had, and how much they truly meant a lot to me. And I still, even today, when I see one of my students out, they will always say, I can still remember you standing in front of class saying, you can become whatever you want to be. And you meant it. And I said, yeah, I did. And they were very encouragable, very loving. I've just probably had a way with kids, that was just my calling. One of my funny stories, there's a whole lot. Debbie Agins and I back there were the, I guess you could call us the field trip queens. And she went on a lot of field trips with me when I had sixth grade, and I took the sixth grade at the end of the year on a field trip, and she was my extra chaperone. And we've had many, many adventures. And one of the funniest ones we had was, we were at SeaWorld, and we decided that we watched Shamu. And we actually got to ride on Shamu, didn't we, Debbie? We have a picture to prove it.
I'd like to see the picture.
And, but another funny one is on Brenda Johnson. Brenda and I were put in a room together at a workshop, and somehow it got mixed up, but we had one bed. So we were in the bed, and Brenda had started her breathing machine. Okay? So we're laying there in the bed, and that machine, you know, and I'm sitting there listening to it, thinking, I'll never go to sleep. I'll never go to sleep tonight. And all of a sudden, I went, Luke, I am your father. And Brenda was like, I said, Luke, I am your father. And Brenda went, who's Luke? Who's in this room with us? Who's Luke? I scared her, but that's the thought that came in my head when I was hearing that machine. But one of the funniest ones I had with one of my students, I had sent him home for a science experiment, and they were to take a clean sock and put it up into the tailpipe of a car, and leave it run for like 10 minutes, and see how much of the emulsions that came out of the tailpipe. That was when their cars were really bad. So I get a phone call late that evening before I go home, and I answer the phone. I won't say the parent's name, but he asked me, he said, Miss Tammy? And I went, yes. And he said, you know, you and I have gotten along all year long. We've not had any problems whatsoever. And I said, I know, what's wrong? And he said, well, I just want to know why you sent my daughter home and told her to stick a sock up my tailpipe. Which I then had to explain why. But that was one of my funniest. I will miss everyone and I hope everybody has a great year in the state, so.
Next, we'd like to recognize Sue Salmes. Sue retired June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, as a third grade teacher at Hamlet, EKA. Worked at Midkiff Elementary, McCorkle Elementary, Duval, is that Duval Elementary? Or I guess.
That was seven and three, twenty.
Midway Elementary and Hamlet, well, of course, I said it was retired. Six years or so, he ran the state of Kentucky before he came back to us. Worked a lot of extra assignments along the way, after-school teacher, after-school facilitator, mentor reading teacher. I was also a reading coach.
Seven years.
Because you were. But a total of thirty years in the school system. And we appreciate your service.
I want to thank you all. It's a big decision, hard to do. I appreciate everyone, Mr. Midkiff on down through the years and down all the schools. Danny Lambert used to say, just like the bus driver, he said, "Just hurry soon and they'll close the school." But I do appreciate you and I thank you for all that you've done. Love the kids. Thank you Sean for all your support and everybody, thank you.
Darlene. Larry, do you want to wait on him? You're waiting on him while you're alive, right?
Eric K. is coming.
Eric, check on Larry. Darlene just retired June thirtieth as a math teacher at Duval, PKA. Started her career in nineteen seventy-two at Summerville. Worked at McCorkle Elementary, Midway Elementary, Griffithsfield, and then transferred to Duval, PKA. She's also worked several years in the after-school programs. Wild Grifters, I didn't know this. Served as basketball coach.
Well, in name only, Tony Lewis. And he wouldn't let parents do it, let him have a teacher there. But Tony Lewis did all the work. I didn't know a thing about it. I just sat there so I could be the professional president.
Forty, forty-six years of service in the school. That's just amazing. And I was, I was given a hard time out in the hallway because I just saw the personnel schedule. And we're getting ready to hire tonight, right? And someone says, "There's somebody, teacher at Duval." It's gonna be a short-lived retirement there. I'm sure Larry's all in favor of that, aren't you Larry?
No comments, the best comment.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you, I appreciate you. I remember Jeff when he first started, math teacher at the high school. And he had my oldest son in, in math. But a lot of people joke about how long I've done this. And I tell them, I said, "Well, I didn't start out in a one-room school, but I did start out in a three-room school." And it's no longer there, but it was really a difficult decision for me to do this. Because I really still was not ready to retire. I loved what I did and I loved the kids. It's just been a joy working with kids. And you hope throughout your career that you'll say or do something that, that students will remember. And some of the things they remember is not always what you wanted to remember. I do have one story about, this happened after we, our school flooded and we had already consolidated. And I'd gone to teach the middle school at Duval. It was probably about the second or third year there. And I went over into an English room and there was a student in there and they said, "Mrs. Tykett." Said, "Do you remember," this student, Paul Brown, he was, he said, "He told me to ask, to ask you if you remember the day that you caught the trash can on fire." And I said, "Oh, yes." So that, when I, the year that I did that, at the graduation, the sixth grade graduation, about ninety percent of the kids wrote down the most memorable event of their year that year was the day that I caught the trash can on fire. Steve was principal. And I was behind a table about like that doing a science experiment. I had sulfur in a spoon and had heated it. And of course, you know, it's just a regular classroom, no place to dispose of science materials. And I'm like, "What am I going to do with this?" So we, the kids were all engaged in talking about chemical changes. And so I just turned around and put sulfur in the trash can, not thinking that there might be something and they're flammable. So I just kept right on teaching. I had on glasses at the time and I kept seeing like flames in my glasses. And the trash can was behind me and I thought, "What in the world?" And the kids couldn't see it either because, you know, they were just out there and the best category hidden. And I turned around and looked and the flames were way up out of the trash can. And I thought, "Oh, my goodness." What I do, I couldn't find anything to put down over top of it. So I told the kids, I said, "Get up in your seats." And we had a back door, I kicked the trash can out the door. Crossed through the classroom, out the door. After I composed myself, I thought, "I'm going to go tell Steve before he kills me." So I went and told him what I'd done. And that was something, I guess, that the kids really remembered. But one of the most embarrassing moments for me was the time, and I think Steve was principal at Griffithsfield then too, was the morning that Bill Brazil came up there. And I always did, like Tammy, the end of the year, six-grade trips, years and years and years of taking kids to Washington DC and Williamsburg and places like that. And lots of times we wouldn't get back until two o'clock in the morning. And so we'd gotten back like two o'clock in the morning on a Friday morning. And the kids won't come to school. So I knew it would be all right if I just came in just a little bit later, you know, like after breakfast. And so I did. And George Gonzalez, man that I've taught with, he said, "Boy, you really pulled a good one this time." He said, "Mr. Brazil was here this morning to present you with your Teacher of the Year plaque in your area." I've enjoyed, you know, every year and still didn't think I was ready to retire. But when you can make more money retired than you can teach, then I guess you have to look at the dollars too. But I still love it. And thank you all for allowing me to serve our county.
Thank you.
Mr. Midkiff, if I can, and I know you'll know this, if I can say something. I have been present during many, well, we only talked about how many years, of Math Field Day Awards. And Darlene Tykett, notorious for cleaning up on Math Field Day. Her students have always ranked, if not first, very close. She has always had winners wherever she was at Math Field Day and that's very impressive. Thank you.
Debbie retired June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, after thirty-nine years of experience. She actually, I saw her there the day she was filling out a retirement papers. She thought I'd been working longer than she had. I said, "Well, this one there is really..."
Well, every time I went to a workshop, he was out of. I just thought it was, you had more time.
Started her teaching career at Midway, or excuse me, Midkiff Elementary in nineteen seventy-nine. And transferred to West Hamlet. I guess you were at Midkiff for what, five or six years?
Not very long.
And then you were at West Hamlet for the remainder of your career. And for many years was involved in the after-school program at West Hamlet. Was it, did I hear that correctly, was it Shamu? I want to make sure I got the story right.
Yes.
You got pictures, somebody's picture. You'll have to show that.
Well, what I do is show the kids, especially the ones that we've had Tammy too, and tell them that we wrote Shamu and they...
And they're just second, third graders, they believe it.
Yeah, they believe anything. Well, we did another field trip of you and Debbie Roberts.
Oh, yeah.
And she took her little boy with her. And we were going through it, he wanted an ice. And we told him, "Get one on the way out of the hood." All the ice is standing close. And we were helping him, you know. We, we went on a lot of field trips together.
Yeah.
And one story I'll tell is another one from Jonah. Jonah initiated me in kindergarten, my first year in kindergarten. Jonah was my student. He went home and he referred to me, I wasn't Miss Atkins. I was mean Miss Atkins. Because I made him mine. And his mom was kicking on to him and, "She's going to get at you, you're going to call her that at school and she's going to get upset." And he said, "No, she won't." And she's going, "Why not?" She said, "I call her that all the time." He did. I was going to be Miss Atkins. And she said, "Yeah, fuck it, she didn't do it." She calls me mean Jonah. And then I got along well. Then at the end of the year, Debbie Roberts always, we always had a little graduation ceremony. And Debbie would take the kids and ask them what they wanted to be when they grew up. Jonah wanted to either be a Chinese person or if it couldn't be that, he was going to be a table. He initiated me well.
He's our technology director.
The day I signed the paper that was retiring, he made the comment, he didn't know how I made it that long. After I had him, I probably should have retired. But thank you and I've enjoyed working up here.
Laura. Laura retired June thirtieth as a special education teacher at Easthamlet High School. Where she taught special education. Oh, I just said that.
You repeat it, you're repeating.
Taught special education at Pleasantview Elementary, Down Valley, was that the high school, middle school?
That was seven twelve.
High school, Hamlet, PKA. And I know we worked for a while. And retired while teaching special education this past year now CHS. Served as the special education mentor, department head for several years. And retires with thirty years of service and has signed up to be a substitute. Laura's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've known Jeff for quite a while. Started subbing back in eighty-seven, did some long-term subbing. If you go into a health facility, please ask the nurses there if they had me as a long-term sub here at the Career Center. And if they say yes, run. Seriously, because I did that here for several months. Started long-term, also did with Newville by way back in the day when I got started that year also. So I've known him for quite a while. I guess one of my fears as, as teaching is that I wouldn't make an impact on students. And I can just say that was kind of my goal, was just to build those relationships with the kids. To have those relationships so that they could trust you when you come more out of them when you did that. And I guess part of the sweet things that occurred was having students come and ask me to pray with them. Because they knew where I stood. Having a little girl in class one day, because she would always ask me about my mom, talk to another student and say, "Hey, come here, we're going to pray for her mom right now." So they had a little prayer in the corner for my mom. I'm retiring because of my mom and my husband, both who are not real well. So I feel like I need to be able to spend a little more time there. Funny story happened actually this year, I have several things, I'm just going to talk about this one. I'm sitting with some students, seniors, so I've known them for several years. And guiding one through, he was taking a math test. And the others are over here talking about, and I don't like this word, I'm going to use it anyway, old farts. And I looked up and I was kind of like, "What?" They're like, "No, no, no, it's okay, we're not talking about you." So, so I hear this terminology, this phrase a couple more times about old farts. And finally I was like, "Stop." I said, "I need to know, what is your definition of an old fart?" Somebody at least in their fifties. So I smacked the table and I looked at him, I said, "So you are talking about me." One of the students stops, "No, no, no, honey, it's okay because you're our cool old fart." So I went up, I was... The following week, the same student comes to class and he has a present for me. And it's a goat. And on it it says, "Old goat." So I tried to find out if I was actually demoted because the week before I was a cool old fart, now I'm just an old goat. Anyway, I've enjoyed working here. I truly believe that I was placed in this, as a teacher. Not knowing what I wanted to do as I came and even went to the high school, I felt like that was an opening that God had provided for me. So, and I want to thank each one of you for letting me have that chance. Thank you.
I'll take a moment just to recognize whether professionals who are retired are not able to join us this evening. Rick Davis retired. Rick retired in December as assistant principal at West Hamlet Elementary. He started his career in nineteen eighty-one as a teacher at Down Valley, I was a student there. And he was athletic trainer. Responsible for wrapping our feet for the football game, particularly feet. It was a dangerous task for him to try to wrap my feet at my age. So anyway, I've known, I've known him since I was in high school. In two thousand nine, two thousand ten school year, transferred to West Hamlet as assistant principal. He coached football, softball, was athletic trainer at Easthamlet High School when the school first opened. And served as athletic supervisor for Down Valley High School. He was an after-school facilitator at West Hamlet Elementary for several years. And retired from the system with thirty-seven years of experience. And he signed up to be substitute and actually has been substituted since his retirement. Melinda Tunnick. Melinda retired June thirtieth as assistant principal at Hartz, PKA. She started working in nineteen ninety at Feralsburg Elementary in special education. She also worked at Abingdon Elementary at Hartz Intermediate before transferring to assistant principal at Hartz, PKA. Melinda coached basketball for several years. As well, served as an after-school facilitator at Hartz, PKA before retiring. Melinda retires with twenty-eight years of service for the school system. John Lambert. John Lambert retired June thirtieth as counselor at Duval, PKA. John retired with nineteen years of service. Served as a mentor for students for, at risk for several years. And that's something I didn't know about John is he'd actually worked in Grant County as a counselor for ten years before coming here. And then he also worked in Kentucky for a few years. I know he had a long drive out here, but anyway, he's now retired and I know he's looking forward, he likes to hunt, he horned here. Nancy Porter. Nancy retired June thirtieth as a yard teacher at Duval, PKA, working for nineteen years as a yard teacher. And also served as a county mentor for a number of years. And that's, that's everyone.
Laura Harshberger, Charlene Davison.
All right, thank you, thanks, I've got to shove my papers here.
Why'd they pay me the small one?
That's right. That's wrong. Charlene Davison. Charlene retired December thirty-first as an adult basic education teacher at the Debbie Career Center. I would say it's at the Debbie Career Center, but here at Central Office. She taught business and art at Hartz High School before she transferred to Debbie's Center as an ABE teacher. Charlene dedicated twenty-eight years' service to the school system and has also signed up to be a substitute. and has also signed up to be a substitute teacher. Laura Harshberger. Laura retired June 30th as a first grade teacher at Hamel PKA. Laura worked at Woodville and McCorkle before transferring to Hamel PKA where she remained and retired with 28 years of service. Mr. Priestley. I'll ask you.
Jeff always sends me these emails, the morning of, you know, these like things. And it's always, would you mind doing this? He knows, he knows I'm going to say yes, but I don't know, why you never ask? Like I see, we had a board meeting yesterday morning. Oh, I forgot, it slipped my mind. But anyway, I am glad to all of you that were able to come here tonight. I enjoy the stories. Some I'm active participant in, some I remember. The schools that you refer to. I was principal at Midkiff one time, but fortunately for you all, I had left before you arrived. And all the different schools, some of the schools that were in Semerco and McCorkle and all those schools are there. I remember, you know, not working there directly, but indirectly. I just want to thank on behalf of all of us, just be thankful for our, for your service to these kids. Some of you. I always do, I always have myself a moment there. We do appreciate you. I'm going to have to always try to come up with something light and get loaded up here. I always, I'm going to make fun of Mr. Limmel. Mr. Limmel has quit three or four times. He's still here. See, I have to always have a, he's my backup. But I, but we do appreciate that. And, you know, the sacrifices you've made, you know, they just are innumerable. Things that I've seen directly and indirectly, once again, just, you know, the children of this county are lucky to have you. I'm proud of this county.
You can have a seat.
Jeff didn't ask me to say anything. But there's something I'd like to say to you all. I'm a product of Lincoln County. Born, raised here, settled home here. And for any of you that wonder if the effort, if the sacrifices you made paid off, did you make a difference? You did. You did. You may have never heard that from a student, but I can think back about. I went to Ranger, then to Guyan Valley for six years. So probably at some point in time, I crossed paths with some of y'all. I substituted for a year in 88, I believe, between college and professional school. But you did make a difference. The sacrifices are worth it. It's not something that you're going to hear, necessarily hear students come to you and say, but it's there. I promise you, I could enumerate examples. Probably every teacher I had, something I learned, if you gave me a list of my teachers, I can remember most of them. I could tell you something that every one of them contributed to me, to make me who I am today. So thank you for everything you've done. The teaching profession is one that not a lot of people are going into now for some reason. Though to see people with your years of experience leaving our school system breaks my heart because you can't be replaced. You can't replace 20, 30, or 40 years of experience. Hopefully though, there's people coming up behind you, people that you've worked with, that you've rubbed off on and you've influenced because you can't replace what you all have contributed to this school system through a lot of difficult times. So for me personally, as a parent, I thank all of you.
No question for this group that your service has been a calling. You know, I've always said there's something more to what we do and thank you so much. And I hope you are able to enjoy your retirement. Debbie, Jonah wanted to be a table.
How long did it take you to realize Jonah was special?
We have a reception for you. Would ask for you to just stick around and join us for a meal. Are we also set up over there?
Yes, in both of the rooms.
Both were in the room. Please stay and join us. We also have a board meeting at six o'clock this evening. And you're invited to attend if you'd like to do so. Again, one, another round of applause for you.